I'm waiting here.
Just give me the signal when you're ready.
That's a signal.
Thumbs up, she's got a thumbs up.
Did I not know, is that not our signal? I thought it was the signal.
You're live.
Love this place. Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting. It is Tuesday, November 12th, and if you could please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, secure the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Thank you. I've called the meeting to order, obviously. First up on the agenda is public comment, and I haven't been informed of any public comment tonight. Not that, okay, good, so we'll go past that. I'm not aware of any department comment for tonight either. Okay, so, we're gonna go right to our section of our agenda's discussion and possible vote. We have five items on that. One is adopt an island initiative, two is a one-day liquor license request, three is a library donation acceptance, four is a Merrimack Select Board letter to the governor, and five is a town administrator bylaw review. After that, we have appointments, resignations, approval of minutes, old and finished business, and town administrator time, select board time. Okay, so, let's get going. So, the adopt an island initiative is in our packet. We have an application from an individual who has been sponsoring the traffic island by the Little Red Schoolhouse. We have an agreement, I assume this is the agreement we do with everybody who does adopt an island?
Correct.
Is there any, anything out of the ordinary or unusual about this? I don't think I've ever had to approve one of these.
So, we have, when the former roadway superintendent was here, we had put forward an initiative to do an adopt an island program to try and help with some of the maintenance in some of our islands here in town. So, this came about because during the election, there were a lot of signs being put in property that was not owned by residents and things of that nature, so it called into question the zoning by law, our sign by law, and brought forward this initiative, again, that was put forward. So, we just asked the individual if they wanted to maintain the island, that they put forward an application for the select board to approve. The select board being the approval authority, given the fact that it is town property.
Okay, so, we approve it for three years, and isn't there someone who sponsors the traffic island by the tea garden as well?
Correct. Bill Dunn put forward, excuse me, Dunn Landscaping put forward an application that was approved by the board.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, so, any discussion from the board? Someone wants to take care of an island for us. It's a good thing.
You said it's already motioned?
No motion yet, no.
Make a motion, approve.
Okay, any discussion?
The only thing on the application, looks like they mentioned the sign was being removed. Was that by a resident, or what?
So, the building commissioner, as part of the zoning enforcement, was removing the sign because there was three signs on the island with three different company names on it.
I see.
Has that all been cleared up?
So, by approving this, they will be able to put one sign on the property, advertising their business as part of the adopt a island program.
Oh, okay, so now it's all clarified and everybody's?
Exactly.
Great, well, I thank, I thank everything pets for offering to do this for us and call for the vote. All in favor? And it's unanimous, thank you very much, we appreciate that. Okay, next on our agenda is a one-day liquor license request. It's for VZ Park, I think all the documents are in here.
I'll make a motion for that, everything looks to be in order.
Okay, should we make a motion for Sonia Melanie Baez? The date of the event is 11:30, 2024, the hours of the event are 5:30 to 9:30 PM. Could I have a second on the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. I'm not quite sure, maybe I just looked at this a little more carefully than ever, but do we have to specify if they're selling the alcohol or giving it away? It says circle one, but then it has another thing below it, like, and then I know you have, VZ Park has their own person that handles the alcohol sales, right?
Well, we usually ask that they specify, but it does not change whether or not the board would move forward with approval.
Okay, okay, and then I know they have, the events by Josie takes care of all that for them, correct?
Correct.
All right, so, we made a motion, but do we get a second on that? Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. Okay, moving on down the line here, we have next, a library donation acceptance, very generous donation. Was there any explanation given as to the background on this donation? I'm just curious.
No, we just received the letter informing us that there was a donation that would be made in the language specifying that it's to be held in a separate account, maintained by the town treasurer, for the specific purpose of the care and maintenance of the physical structure of the Langley Adams Library.
Okay, so, this donation is coming from the Francis W. Sullivan Charitable Remainder Trust, and the amount is $495,818. Yes, it's a very generous trust. So, we are just voting to accept it?
That's correct.
Okay, I need a motion to accept the donation.
Make a motion, we accept.
You know, go ahead, say it. Mark seconded, thank you. Hang on to it. All right, do we have any more discussion of this? Again, thank you to whoever this benefactor is, it's certainly a very wonderful thing to do.
Yes, I just want to say thank you as well.
Okay, okay, all in favor? And it is unanimous, thank you. Okay, and now we're going down to, are we up to, the Merrimack Select Board letter to the governor. So, we saw this letter once before, and I did take the opportunity to make some edits, and then I did call Chris Manning, the chair of the Merrimack Board, and I ran by him what I was thinking and why I kind of reorganized it a little bit. And if you, if it's okay with everybody, I'd like to just kind of read it through with my edits in it. And then, what he said is his board is meeting Monday, and they would then look it over, maybe make a few more edits if they want, and then Wes Newberry may also want to be on board with this. So, my edits were just mainly to, as I explained before, get in there about the formula favoring the urban districts and treating us differently as a regional group. And then I also put an ending line asking for a meeting, because I thought just sending a letter doesn't seem to do very much, because we've certainly signed a lot of these letters in the past. So, I'm going to just read it through with my edits, and I apologize for not being able to get it typed up, but I did these at work, and I can't be online on my own computer at work. So, the letter is to Governor Healy, dear Governor Healy, and this begins some of my edits. "We, the select boards of Groveland and Merrimack, are writing to express our deep concern about the significant cut of almost $300,000 to our school district's regional transportation aid. This cut was made without explanation and impacted not only school services, but in addition, impacted essential town services such as support for our elderly population. These cuts to both education and essential human services will continue unless regional transportation aid is restored. Regional school districts, by definition, are expected to incur higher transportation costs as compared to urban schools, as we need to transport our students across town lines. These higher costs are more than offset by the savings from a consolidated administration, shared school space, shared special education services, and other economies of scale. At the state level, these savings are reflected in the state calculation for foundation budget and Chapter 70 funding. Regional school districts like Penntucket have long been held in, hold harmless status under Chapter 70 formula, receiving only minimal aid increases despite increasing operational costs. Since FY07, these districts have faced modest increases in foundation budget and mandated net school spending, leading to significant financial strain on our member towns. It is clear that the state formula for Chapter 78 is a poor fit for a regional school district and buys it designed channels increased school funding to urban schools as compared to rural schools, despite similar economic factors. For example, in FY23, Penntucket's net mandated net school spending was at 126.51% of its foundation budget. These percentages reflect the additional local funding required to just maintain operations. As the Chapter 70 formula has not provided adequate state support. By contrast, the urban district of Lawrence, which is not in the hold harmless status, had a net school spending of essentially 100%, meaning that its foundation budget is sufficient to cover the operational costs without placing a significant burden on local taxpayers. In addition, the school population in our region decreased from 2007 to 2019, leading the state to require districts like Penntucket to pay more. This is no longer the case. Penntucket's enrollment has remained relatively steady over the last four years and is expected to see modest growth due to new development plans. It seems the state is penalizing Penntucket in FY24 for declining enrollment that began nearly two decades ago. As a result, Penntucket must increasingly rely on local taxpayers to cover the funding gap, resulting in budget overrides, layoffs, and higher transportation fees for families. Proposition 2.5% limits our ability to raise property taxes to cover shortfalls, creating a fiscal crisis that is unsustainable. Inflation has outpaced the 2.5% cap on tax increases, making it impossible for our town to keep up with the rising education costs without making severe cuts. We urge you to address this issue by incrementally increasing transportation funding until the state fulfills its original promise to cover 100% of regional transportation costs. Doing this would relieve the financial burden on towns like Merrimack, West Newbury, Groveland, and others across the Commonwealth, ensuring that all students have access to quality education regardless of where they live. Thank you for attention to this matter. We would appreciate the opportunity to meet with you and/or your staff to discuss this critical issue more completely. We are hopeful that, under your leadership, we can find a path forward that ensures all students in Massachusetts have access to the resources they need to succeed. Sincerely, Boards of Selectmen." That's how it would read.
Get rid of the paragraph.
I got rid of the paragraph up above there. I changed the first whole block entry, maintaining the spirit of it, and then inserted some things about the formula, which I spoke about with you, and then I just took out some, some words so that it has a little bit more of a punch. I think it lands on those, yeah, well, I mean, I wanted to make sure that the point being that it's not just cuts to education that we're looking at, it's cuts to our, first of all, our human services, which we value, and afterwards, the cuts would continue down the line if we had to. And we've been facing this critical issue now, what, three years running, four years running, and there seems to be no end in sight. So, we're pushing out now with Chris Manning, Chair of the, Merrimack Select Board did incredible amount of research, I added to it some of the research I've done, and then it will go to the Merrimack Board Monday night, and then from there, I suppose, to the Wes Newberry Board. So, if it's okay with everybody here in this somewhat informal frame to approve it, that would help Merrimack be able to move forward with it. I can clean up my sloppy copy and send it in better form to Merrimack.
I do have one question.
Sure.
Regarding to Penntucket spending 126% versus Lawrence spending only 100% of their foundation budget?
Well, it's, it's not the spending, it's the, it's the point that Lawrence is funded so that their foundation budget alone is sufficient to cover all their operating costs. We're not funded at that level.
Is that because Penntucket's spending more than it should? Or do we have any other information that shows that they're being funded better than what Penntucket is?
Well, I did, that's why I threw in the poor fit of the Chapter 78. My informal review, and I did a study of running our district the way Newburyport was run, so treating our three towns as one school district, not trying to decide which town had more money and which town had less money, treated us as a school district the way Newburyport is, the way Bradford is part of Hadrell and is not singled out as a side of town that could pay more. If you treated us as one school district, the numbers change, and I thought, my thinking is we would be eligible for more Chapter 78 if it was done that way, because this formula is designed for a singular school district, it's not designed for a regional district. So, without getting too complicated about it, what they're doing is applying a single school district formula to each of our towns, and then deciding how much we each should pay, and then adding it all together, and it just doesn't work. And we've seen that with the cuts in aid that we've been facing. We're one school district, and we save the state an enormous amount of money. That was one of the things I did put in, is the economies of scale that we provide by sharing one administration across three towns, sharing special education services across three towns. Those are pretty significant savings, and it's reflected in the state, because then they don't have to do as much circuit breaker and other, other payments to us, because we are doing what is really fiscally responsible. But transportation is, by definition, for a regional school district, expected to be higher than transportation in urban district. So, it's just illogical and unfair to not fund that one aspect of our district. So, I think Chris's letter is the first time we've actually gone after something really specific and concrete, and said, okay, you know what, this, if you could just incrementally increase this until you're funding 100% of our transportation costs, then that doesn't speak to-
Which it's supposed to do anyway.
Well, yes, that was the promise of, we, initially, when we redid this, we did receive an influx of money, but now it's just been kind of chipped away and redirected, and we've lost it. So, this is our, this doesn't really have to do with the school spending too much on, on teachers or something like that, it's more about transportation costs. How about, help us on that? And, and then help, and then that will help us do better in managing our town budget. So, if everybody thinks that's a good message, yes?
In addition to sending this to the governor?
Yes.
I think it should be CC and a legislative delegation, or all the legislative-
Oh, good, good point.
-members that represent the Penntucket District, I think now there's three representatives, but-
Turn your mic on.
Oh.
Send it to the legislative delegation. I think at, at the Penntucket District, there's three representatives, and we should be sending it to them to make them aware of what's going on.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I guess give a motion just to approve this sloppy copy that I'll clean up informally and with ads added to it, send it on to Merrimack.
I'll make a motion, we accept the sloppy copy. Send it on over.
I'll second that.
Would you call it a sloppy copy?
That's what she said.
It is a very, you have no idea how sloppy it is today. It's not good.
No, it sounded very, well, good, so.
Well, I read it well, it's not, it doesn't look good. I'll clean it up, but anyway, any more discussion? There being none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor? It's unanimous, so I'll clean it up and get it to you. Okay, thanks. All right, and so, back to our agenda. Now, we're up to the town administrator bylaw review. So, this came from the finishing committee. Sounded very fancy when we created it, that was Jason, Dan McDonald, no?
Joe Demore.
Joe Demore.
John Osborne.
The finishing committee? Am I?
Oh, no, maybe, maybe I'm wrong.
The finishing committee was Select Board Member Neves, it was Joe Demore, it was Select Board Member Daniel McDonald, and myself.
Okay, the finishing committee. So, and so now we have before us a draft of what they finished, obviously, duh. And I guess what I would suggest, from what I've understood, has not gone through town attorney yet or anything like that, so perhaps the best way to go through it is just section by section, and highlight or circle anything that you have a question on or concern on, or you want town council to look at, or that you might not necessarily want in the bylaw. Just circle or highlight tonight, if I think that would be the most, and then we'll decide if it's ready to go to town council. We don't want to keep ping ponging it back and forth, is that, does everyone agree with that? Okay.
I read through it earlier, I mean, seems pretty straightforward, I mean.
Right, I know when, when I was on the board with Bill Dunn, we looked at a lot of bylaws, and this has a lot of the same sections. So, section one, should we just start with the sections?
Yeah, we don't need the preamble.
Section one is appointments. So, I had two questions about that, so maybe, why we don't, we want it to be four votes of the Board of Select, of the Select Board to hire someone, not three, not a majority vote?
I would think of, I would like, I'd like it to four.
Yeah.
Because you don't want it to just, yeah.
You don't want the board split?
Yeah, I mean.
Okay.
I mean, if this-
Does everybody agree with that? Jason, you too? And on the search committee, it doesn't really say who would be on, it doesn't say, like, finance on board, it doesn't say which departments, it kind of just says, anybody but the board, the select board. That's kind of funny. Yeah, anybody but the select board could be on the search committee. I didn't know, I remember we have with the finance director bylaw, we had a specific pool of people that we wanted on the search committee each time. So, was there some reason? Jason, you were on the committee, right? Was there some reason why you left it very open?
I think it covers pretty much town employees or board members, or any interested member of the public. I thought it was very inclusive of anybody that would be, that, that the board would see as capable of making that type of decision, without, without excluding anybody.
Right, you limited to five people, but you said, basically, they can choose from any and all.
Right.
Everyone all right with that? For the selection committee? And then, section two, powers and duties. It lists them as the chief administrative office, and responsible for administering, coordinating all employees, activities, departments, placed by the general laws, statutes, regulations, et cetera. The town administrator should devote full working time to the duties of their office. They can't run for an elective office.
Could you go back to number three on the section one?
Number three, the town administrator should be appointed on the basis of education, executive and administrative qualifications and expertise. They shall not have held any, any elected positions in town for a period of three years prior to appointment.
And three years after, and during appointment as town administrator. There's nothing in there that says that a town administrator couldn't be elected to the board of selection?
It does under, well, just to-
Powers and duties?
Under powers and duties, it does cover it there. And I also, I'm not positive, but wouldn't the conflict of interest law come into play on this? Because you can't receive two salaries, right? You could be an elected school committee member in another town, but you can't be elected to the school committee in this town and take a salary from that and be the town administrator. That's my understanding.
I've actually-
You have the choice, if you're elected to two different boards-
You have to choose your salary.
You can take one.
Yes.
I've actually spoken to the attorney of the day on that, and you can be elected to as many positions within the town as the people will elect you to.
Elect you to.
Yes.
But the town administrator is not elected.
Right.
So, that's where it changes things.
Yes.
So, and so, we're under powers and duties, it does say, "The town administrator shall devote full working time to the duties of their office. They shall not become a candidate for or hold any elective offices during their term of appointment, and shall not engage in other business activity during their term, except with the written consent of the select board." Does that cover what you're concerned?
Yeah, in more words than I would use, but it basically covers it.
Okay. All right, so, can we move to section three, financial responsibilities? Okay, there are six items under this. The town administrator responsible for consulting with town accountant, and the town's independent It refers to our financial policies manual. Section two, this town administrator shall review and approve all town warrants authorized by the town accountant, we already have that in place, by vote of the board. The town administrator shall be the chief procurement officer of the town. Town, number four, the town administrator is responsible for assembling, preparing, and presenting a balanced annual operating budget, capital improvement budget, along with annual revision of the capital improvement plan to the select board. Item five, the town administrator is responsible for seeing that the budget is administered and expended as adopted by town meeting, and in accordance with general laws, the town's financial policies manual, and general bylaw. And item six, the town administrator is responsible for the distribution of the warrant and finance committee report for all town meetings. So, that's section three. Okay, section four, responsibilities for personnel administration. The town administrator designated by the select board will serve as personnel officer for the town with responsibility for the administration of the town's personnel system in accordance with the provisions of the town's personnel bylaw and the personnel procedures manual. That's item one. Item two, town administrator shall conduct annual evaluations of all department heads who are subject to the provisions of the personnel procedures manual, and not otherwise accepted from evaluation by statute. Three, the town administrator shall negotiate collective bargaining contracts. Four, the town administrator is responsible for administering and enforcing collective bargaining contracts, personnel rules, regulations, and bylaws adopted by the town. Five, town administrator may inquire at any time into the conduct of any officer, employee, special employee, independent contractor, department head, department, board, or commission, or agency with regards to any matters affecting town administration, and have open and free access to all documents and records from any source, electronic or otherwise, that are relevant to said inquiry, and not otherwise privileged. Now, item six, town administrator responsible for periodically proposing personnel bylaw and personnel procedure manual changes, such policies and procedures as methods of determining the merit and qualifications of candidates for appointment and promotion, policies and procedures regulating reduction in force and removal of employees, hours of work, and wages, attendance regulations, and provisions for sick, vacation, military, other leave, and any other changes deemed necessary by the town administrator. And the town administrator may implement policies and procedures relating to provisional appointments, in-service training programs, grievance, procedure rules, rules relating to employee organizations, and other practices and procedures necessary to the efficient operation of a personnel system. Unless otherwise agreed, the town administrator's personnel responsibilities do not extend to the police, fire, light department, and- to the police, fire, light department, and the school department. And that completes that, section four. Section five is responsibilities for appointments, discipline, and grievances. The town administrator shall have the power to appoint any employee, department head, or supervisor based solely on merit and qualifications within the limitations outlined by state statutes. Number two, the power to appoint can be revoked by four out of five select board members. Item three, the select board may, at its option, designate the town administrator to advise on union and contractual employees' grievance procedures. Four, additionally, the town administrator is to act as the hearing officer to advocate step-two grievances under the town's personnel procedures manual with regard to any grievance brought by a town employee unless the power to act as the hearing officer is revoked by a vote of four out of the five select board members or the appointment constitutes a conflict of interest for the town administrator. In such instances, the select board will remain as the step-two grievance hearing panel. The town administrator, as designated hearing officer, shall, within the timelines outlined in the manual, investigate the allegations and the complaint, meet with the employee, attempt to satisfactorily resolve the complaint, and in the absence of a satisfactory resolution of the complaint, render within ten days of the presentation of the grievance a written decision with a statement of reason for disposing of the complaint. That's item, number four, under section five. Number five, any employee dissatisfied with the administrator's decision may, within seven days after receipt of the decision, appeal to the select board, who, within seven days of receipt of the appeal, may, with or without a hearing, affirm, modify, or reverse the decision of the administrator. And six, temporary suspensions. The administrator, where allowed by state statutes, may, when circumstances warrant such action, immediately suspend any employee, supervisor, or department head with or without pay as outlined in the personnel procedures manual. The employee is entitled to grieve the temporary suspension as outlined in the manual. Number seven, dismissals. The administrator shall have the powers to dismiss any employee, department head, or supervisor in conformance with the procedures outlined in the personnel procedures manual within the limitations outlined by state statutes, and unless the power to dismissal is revoked by four out of the five select board members. Eight, if after this bylaw is enacted and approved by the attorney general, any subsequent amendment of the personnel procedures manual dealing with discipline and grievances of employees conflicts with the terms of the bylaw section, then the terms of the personnel procedures manual shall thereafter control the rights of the parties in such matters. Nine, any time requirement set out in this section may, at the option of the select board, be extended for, there's a word, not right. I think it's the word is "an" for an additional period not to exceed seven days. Any additional extensions may occur only after the agreement of both parties in writing. So there's nine sections under section five, responsibilities for appointment, discipline, and grievances. Any discussion or questions? No, okay. Moving on to six. Six is only two sections, responsibility for administration reorganization. The town administrator with, may, with the approval of the select board, establish, reorganize, consolidate, or abolish any department or position placed by this bylaw under their supervision and control except as otherwise provided by general laws of the Commonwealth or the provisions of another town bylaw. Two, the creation of any new full-time compensated position shall require the approval of the affirmative vote of the, of four members of the select board. So there's just two sections under six, which is responsibility for administrative, administration reorganization. Any discussion, questions? No, okay. Section seven, evaluation. The select board shall annually evaluate the performance of the town administrator with a written set of procedures and criteria periodically updated by the select board. Two, a copy of the evaluation shall be provided to the administrator. Discussion or questions? No, there be none. Section eight, removal. The select board, by the affirmative vote of at least four members, may initiate the removal of the town administrator by adopting a resolution to that effect stating the reasons for the removal. The vote initiating removal shall be taken at a regular scheduled public meeting and in open session or other session, all in conformance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. Two, the adopt, the adoption of said resolution shall serve to suspend the town administrator for a period of not more than forty-five days, during which time their salary should continue to be paid.
Uh, question on that?
Yep.
Uh, the, the same thing should apply to the town administrator as in, uh, section five, number six, where the town administrator, if circumstances warrant, immediately suspend an employee, supervisor, or department head with or without pay. The same should apply for the town administrator. If there's something so gross negligent or something they, that they would warrant a suspension without pay, the same shit thing should apply here as with other employees.
Anybody else? I, I don't know. I don't know whether the law mandates this or is this something that's out of our discretion? So you want to know if it's out of our discretion to put that same language?
No, I think it should be, it should be added that, uh, the, the, the board should be able to suspend the town administrator for something so gross negligent or whatever without pay, the same as the town administrator could, could suspend an employee, supervisor, or department head with or without pay. You should use the same language here.
I don't, I don't know why there's a difference in language. I wasn't on the finishing committee. Do, do you have any? Is there a reason for it?
You excited to that?
Excuse me?
I think the position has a certain expectation. Sort of like a fire chief, a police officer. When they're brought into question, there's a lot more investigation that needs to go on and a lot more allocations can lead to their suspension without any real proof behind it. So that's why a lot of police officers are put on leave with pay until proper investigation is conducted. And I think the position of town administrator would fall under that category.
Because it's a contractual employee?
It's the high level of expectations that are held with the position.
Okay, so, but then like a, um.
So you don't think a department head or supervisor held to a high standard?
I don't think there's the same, um, type of accusations that would call into question their ability to do their job as with somebody that's at the, at the town administrator level.
So you want to, you want to hold the, uh, those employees to a different standard than, uh, the town administrator, basically?
I think the job description does that in itself. Just in what their expectations are of what they do.
I think a department head or a supervisor would should be held to the same standard.
I'm not sure, myself personally, I mean, as I think about it. I know that, um, in the job as a teacher, a, of a, certain complaints can have you removed from, it's happened, not to me, but to other teaching staff that can remove you from the classroom until they determine that you did not do that.
See, that's a little different because the teachers are covered under.
Contractual, right.
Reunion.
Right, so I'm just thinking though that a town administrator, the bandwidth of the types of accusations that could be made are such that you might want that person out of that office while you, while you ensure that you've investigated, make sure that this didn't happen. Is that where you're coming from?
Yeah, the high profile of the position.
Yeah, that, I'm thinking along the same lines. But on the other hand, um, and to your point, I think that for the town administrator to take on the responsibility of removing somebody without pay is a weighty, weighty responsibility because it can result in action against the town. So I would imagine that there would be very, very rare occasions when that would actually happen. That most likely, most suspensions are with pay while you investigate to determine all of the facts. So I, I don't know, would, would this be something you'd want the town attorney to say? That we're applying, are we applying two different standards to similar people? Is it fair? I don't know. Is this standard practice in the industry? I don't know the answer to that. Perhaps would the town attorney be able to inform us if this is kind of boilerplate language? That would be helpful. I mean, a lot of these, four out of five votes I've seen in a lot of the other contracts that I reviewed years ago, so.
I think that would be a fair question for town council.
Mark, do you have any thoughts on it, one way or the other?
No, I kind of see both sides of it.
Yeah, understandable, yeah. Okay, so should we circle it? And then where's the other section, Ed, that you're? It's in.
Section five, number six.
Five or six. Uh, with five responsibilities for appointments, discipline, and grievances? Is that where it is?
Yeah, that, number six.
Okay, yep. Okay, see if those two are, okay. So we've circled six and we've circled item two under removal. Okay. All right, and then item three, within seven days following the receipt of such resolution, the town administrator may file a written request for a public hearing. If such a hearing is requested, the board shall schedule it within two weeks and it should be held in a public place. The town council shall preside at such hearing. Is, that's item four. Item five, at any such hearing, the reasons for removal shall first be read aloud. Item six, final removal of the town administrator shall be affected by the affirmative vote of at least four members of the select board at a public hearing of the board. If no hearing has been requested, final removal may be affected by an affirmative vote of at least four members at a meeting of the board held not earlier than fourteen days after the vote initiating the removal. The salary of the town administrator shall continue to be paid for a period of forty-five days after the vote affecting removal from office. And item seven, the town administrator shall provide the select board with at least forty-five days' notice of an intended resignation, provided, however, that the board may, at its discretion, shorten or waive such requirement. Well, that kind of explains the forty-five day business. So forty-five days to leave the job, forty-five days if the board is thinking the person should not be in the job. Do we have anything more on that section? No, okay. Section nine, fill-in vacancy. When a vacancy arises in the office of town administrator, the select board shall advertise the vacancy as soon as possible. The board shall fill the vacancy as soon as possible. That's all that's under there. Section ten, acting town administrator. The select board shall designate within ten days a town employee or, or other person to exercise the rights and perform the duties of town administrator during any vacancy caused by the temporary absence or suspension or removal, resignation, or death. There's a lot of "or"s in that. I just lost my place. There's a lot of "or"s in that. I don't know if that, all the "or"s are right. Do you know what I mean by that? Has everybody looked at that? As a temporary absence or suspension or removal, resignation, or death of the town administrator. I feel like it should be one "or", but.
Just a question on that. If you look at, if you look at some of these appointments in municipalities to a town administrator or a, uh, a manager, it's, some of them are taking longer than, uh, than the, uh, six months to, to fill these. And, and this is, you're kind of at a deadline here of ninety days with, uh, not to exceed ninety more days, uh, that you, you may not get somebody on board within six months unless you, what you're looking at is to appoint somebody else after the ninety plus the ninety. If you don't have a full-time person, some of them are taking more than, more than the, uh, six months to a hundred, uh, hundred and eighty days to, uh, fill these jobs.
Right, I think that it's just saying if we do appoint an acting town administrator, the period shall not exceed ninety days, but at the end of the ninety days, it can be renewed. So that gives you a rolling window.
It says only for one additional period not to exceed ninety days, last sentence.
Let me see, it may be renewed in the case of suspension, removal, resignation, or death, only once. So, yeah, oh, okay, wait.
So then after the hundred and eighty, we'd have to appoint somebody else?
Mm-hmm. Huh. I see the point of that, yeah. Do you want to just take out the only ones? And just let it be? I mean, I understand the need to kind of put some parameters on these type of appointments of, um, acting town administrator because you don't, certainly don't want to keep rolling that on and on and on and on. But, okay, we've been in the case, you know, where difficult job market and things like that have forced us not to be able to fill a position. So do you want the only ones taken out?
No, I think, um, what I'm looking at is maybe, um, only once for an additional period of ninety. Get rid of the only once because by the time you advertise the job, you, uh, form a committee, you, uh, take, uh, applications, you go through interviews, you hire, hire the person. They may need some time to, uh, give a, a notice of where they're, where they're working if they, rather than just abruptly, uh, get up and leave. So I, I, I think it might take you more than the six months to hire somebody.
Right, so there's, as I said, I just said to you, do you want us to remove the words only once so it can be renewed for a ninety-day rolling window? Okay.
Yeah, so it can be renewed.
That's what I say, okay. So we're just going to remove the two words only once and leave it kind of open?
I think, I think it's important to realize this is just for a temporary sys, it's not an interim position. It's not like we're hiring somebody interim that would fill that position while we were looking for somebody. This is just an emergency. You can't have somebody that you appoint within ten days as an emergency appointment be there for an extended period of time. During those hundred and, uh, hundred and eighty days, if you need that long, to find somebody to fill that role as an interim person while you find the right person would be a different, uh, a different deal. Whether it's that same person you, you decide to keep there as the interim, but not just a, an emergency fill-in.
Right, I, but I still say that, you know, once you start this process, you don't have total control over what else is going on. And I would not, I think that the intention here is pretty clear. Get the, get it done and even get an interim in or get the newer, new person in. But, um, I, I don't want to limit it.
Right, because what do we do with a hundred and eighty-one days?
We just close it, we just quit. We just stop. Turn off the light.
And there's parameters in there for if the, if the, if the designee is a town employee, they can't apply for the full-time job because it doesn't meet one of the other articles here that they couldn't have worked for the town.
No, there's nothing in this that says another town employee can't apply for the job. The, the clause in here was about elected, being on, being an elected official and then going after this job. And, and that's, I think that's fair.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay, so conflict with other bylaws. If any other town bylaw or terms of any procedures manual not established by special acts legislation conflicts with the provisions of this bylaw, then the terms and provisions of this bylaw shall control. Section 12, severability. If any provision of this bylaw is deemed unconstitutional or unlawful by a court of competent jurisdiction, then all of the sections of the bylaw shall remain in full force and effect. Okay, and that's the end of it. So we took out the words only once in section 10 and we circled section number two under section eight, so 8.2 is circled and 5.6, section five, paragraph six, is also circled. And that, that's it. Do I have everything?
Mm-hmm. I think so.
Okay, so what do we do next? We've done all this work.
If you'd like, I would suggest that we send this to town council for review.
Okay. Want to vote of the board on that?
I think it would be.
Advisable, okay. Can I get a motion to send this to town council with the circles and the one small change?
I'll make a motion to send the town administrator bylaw review to town council with our edits.
Circles.
Our circles.
I like the word circle.
Wait, what was it last time?
Someone second that?
I'll second that, yep.
Okay, more discussion? All in favor?
Yeah.
It's unanimous. Okay, thank you. All right, so we also have some appointments, I believe. Did I miss something?
Concerning those appointments.
Yes?
I had, I had a phone call today from the chairman of the CPC committee and he, he asked if we could hold off on these. He'd like to address the board on the appointments and he's not able to make the meeting tonight and he'd like it to be put off until he can address the board.
Okay, so we have one appointment for the Groveland Housing Authority and one appointment for the Community Preservation Committee. But did the Community Preservation Committee vote on something that, okay, we have some, will we let Mike?
No, they don't, but he would like to address the board, the chairman would like to address the board.
Okay.
At the next meeting and he wasn't able to come tonight.
Okay, Rebecca, did you receive any contact?
So I received two letters of interest to fill the two vacant seats that are on the Community Preservation Committee, which the chairman had come before the board and announced that there were two vacancies and under the bylaw with the committees both not currently being in existence, there is a provision that would allow the select board to make those appointments for the remainder of that term until a more long-term solution could be found, whether or not we change the bylaw to add another member from a different committee, or if that committee then has members on it, then they would then be able to appoint accordingly to the bylaw. I, I did receive an email from the CPC chair today telling me that he might have some interested parties. I informed him that we did receive two letters of interest already and he asked what the proper procedure was for submitting those. The standard procedure has been either to submit a letter of interest to myself or submit a letter or form on our online portal that gets forwarded to me. I then take the letter and put it before the select board to see whether or not you would like to make the appointment.
So did we appoint last meeting? We appointed to one of the vacancies?
We did not.
So we still have two?
So these are both for a community preservation. That individual actually sits on the Groveland Housing Authority.
Oh, yes, okay.
And the argument was that because they sit on the Groveland Housing Authority and the vacant seat has to do with the Affordable Housing Committee.
Yes.
That that relationship might be important based upon the fact that that was the intent of the bylaw to begin with.
Yep, I agree, yeah. Okay, and Mike?
Sure. Mike Dempsey, member of the Community Preservation Committee. So this is an unusual circumstance. Normally, the select board does not appoint anybody to this committee and committee members do not interact with each other about their appointments. These appointments are all made by the particular board that they represent. So the fact that any other member on the board might have a comment about somebody really is irrelevant as long as those people are qualified for the position that they're attempting to fill. So previously, before the current chair was elected, we didn't really look at, as closely at the, the bylaw for the CPC. He brought up that the select board in this case where we don't have committees that can appoint somebody, that we should ask the select board to appoint somebody, which is where this came from when he came two weeks ago and announced it. But I, I think what I'm trying to say tonight is we are in a position now, we're entering the most, the busiest season for community preservation. We need two more appointees, especially in these two areas, affordable housing and open space, because we don't have anybody representing them. And as you know, we have four areas, recreation, historic preservation, affordable housing, and open space. So we're going into this again, so I, I don't think it's a good idea to wait. We have two qualified candidates. They're both qualified. Are the, are they the only candidates? No, we may have others who, you know, might come forward, but on the other hand, this was announced two weeks ago and two people already came forward. What are we waiting for? So I would ask that you appoint these two people tonight.
How many people are on the board? How, how many positions are on the board? Just three?
Nine.
Yes. It's nice, so let me see if we can remember now. We have a finance board member, right?
Yes.
Select board member.
Correct.
Conservation.
Yes.
Now, who else?
Planning.
Planning.
Recreation.
Groveland Housing Authority.
Groveland Housing Authority.
Historic.
Historic, right, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm still missing, the open spa, the Trails Committee, but we don't have Trails.
Recreation.
Trails are the same, okay. And, yeah, it's very, it's all laid out in that, in the law, right, that created this whole thing. But in the absence of, we do not have an affordable housing committee, Groveland Housing Authority is a close, at least they know about the rules that pertain to the housing back there, somewhat familiar with affordable housing mandates.
So the bylaw reads that there's one board, a select, a select board member, one finance committee member, one conservation commission member, one planning board member, one member of the historical commission, one member of the recreation committee, one member of the housing authority, one member of the open space and trails committee, and then one member of the affordable housing task force. And then when you scroll down, it states that should any of the, and each one of those are appointed by the commission or board. It's not coming unless it's the select board, in which case the select board chooses a member that they would put forward. So should any of the commissions, boards, councils, or committees who have been appointed authority, who have appointed authority under this section be no longer in existence for whatever reason, the appointing authority for that commission, board, council, or committee shall become the responsibility of the select board.
Right, that makes sense.
So let me, let me just rewind real quick. Ed got a phone call and he requested that it was put off until next week. Why, are we speaking for Adam right now? Talking about all this, like, he wanted to say something, I'm assuming, right?
What's that, he wanted to what?
He wanted to say something?
Yeah, he wanted to address the board about the appointments.
So I'm, that's why I'm saying, are we speaking for him or like?
I, I'm sorry.
I don't want to.
I, I kind of, I don't know where you're going with this, but if you're going where I'm feeling, it's like I am most uncomfortable. We have two people volunteering for two vacancy that we asked for volunteers for at our last meeting.
Yep, no, I understand that.
And I, and I'm sure that they're both very good, honest, worthy people and to just hold them up because of something that I'm not personally aware of without it in writing or, so I, I can't imagine why we would hold up the appointment because if you really like the Community Preservation Committee and you want to get involved in it, I think there's ways, you know, to put your name in. And I know that when we do appointments, we can, we can get a little more verbal about and be louder and let people know more about committees like this. Maybe we need to be a little more proactive on it, but I feel that we have two candidates who put their names in and did everything they're supposed to do and we asked them to do this, okay? I mean, I did reach out to somebody and I thought they were going to put their name in, but they didn't, but that's okay. You know, people are good, people are busy. You know, I take, I take it as a good sign every time someone sends us a letter and says they'd like to try and help us out. So I'm glad to hear from the chairman of the CPC about any matter he wants to speak to us on, but I feel that, I, I don't see why you would hold up people who volunteered for that. Just, I would say just appoint them, fill the slots so they have their quorum and they can get their work done. And they, they kind of work from now till January-ish, right? It's fast and furious.
Well, I just, I wanted to hear what he, what his reasoning was, is my point.
I think we, I think we should be able to hear what he has to say.
I just, I don't.
He can speak to us, I'm glad of that. I just don't, I feel like we can go ahead with the appointments and we can still have him come in and speak to us.
We're only talking, holding off on these for, for, for two weeks until our next meeting.
I don't like the sound of holding off because I'm glad to hear from Adam. I welcome Adam to come to our meeting and be on the agenda and talk to us about anything he thinks is important. But we have two people volunteered, put their names in, submitted the documentation to be on a committee. They volunteered. Appoint them. That's what you do and you say thank you. That's how you deal with it. That's how you show people that we appreciate it when they step forward and put their name in, okay? And again, I, I respect the chair of the CPC and I welcome him to our meeting to talk to us on any topic. But people who are volunteering are coming to us because we're in charge of now appointing and I think that's our decision point and that's our responsibility. And the day that we start postponing our volunteers, I think it'll be the day that people will stop sending letters to us and saying they're willing to help out with all the activities. We run a lot of this town on volunteerism and I appreciate that.
I'm just saying, I, I, if he asked for this to be held off for a reason, I just, I, I don't know. I don't feel comfortable voting on something, but that's, that's.
For me, I think time is of the essence. So the next Community Preservation Committee meeting is on the 18th. We're not meeting again till the 25th, so that's one meeting that these volunteers wouldn't be able to attend. So there'll be a meeting in December, right? Everything needs to get kind of wrapped up in January, so you're giving these, whoever's going to get it, one meeting in December to, to provide input? I just, I, I think that's unfair. I'm not really, I understand of his concerns and it's too bad he couldn't be here to express that, but I just feel like with the timing of things, we don't have time to sit and figure it out because it's unfair. That's just my thoughts.
This is why we get the top job. The appointment job, because people send us letters and they ask if they can be appointed to a committee and we always say yes, thank you. That's what we do. So, and I have a, a motion to appoint, is it Leah, Leah Crane of River Pines Road, a member of the Groveland Housing Authority, to the Community Preservation Committee effective November 12th, 2024 through June 30th, 2025.
All right, I'll do it. I'll make a motion to appoint Leah Crane of River Pines Road and a member of the Groveland Housing Authority to the Community Preservation Committee effective November 12th, 2024 through June 30th, 2025.
I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Well, I do agree with Mark and I would really like to hear what Adam has to say and learn more about who he has in mind for the appointments, but because it is getting so late, I would, I would say that we have to move forward.
We'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Just hold on.
Three in favor, opposed. Two opposed. It passes. I'll ask for a motion to appoint Elaine, I can't say the middle name, Talamizian Muse of Cannon Hill Avenue to the Community Preservation Committee effective November 12th, 2024 through June 30th, 2025.
I'll make a motion to appoint Elaine.
Muse.
Talamizian, I'm sorry, Elaine Muse of Cannon Hill Avenue to the Community Preservation Committee effective November 12th, 2024 through June 30th, 2025.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Three in favor, opposed. Two opposed. It passes. Okay, I have approval of the minutes from July 22nd, 2024. Has everybody had your chance to review those? I don't think I reviewed, I was too busy. I'll rely on your good judgments. I unfortunately did not have time for these. They seem to be, everybody present on July 22nd, 2024?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from July 22nd, 2024.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? There being none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? It's unanimous. Ask for a motion to approve the minutes from September 30th, 2024?
They look to be in order, I'll move for passage.
Second that.
Any discussion?
I'm going to recuse myself because I was absent that day.
Okay. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Yep.
Four in favor, one recusal. I'll call for a vote on the minutes from October 15th, 2024?
I'll make a motion to approve the select board meeting minutes for October 15th, 2024. I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes.
You're here, you're here. You're okay. You're okay, you're okay. I'll, do we have any?
Yeah, under the present section, my name is listed as Kathleen Boucher. My Aunt Kathy would be very excited to see that, but that's the only edit that I saw that.
That's my name.
I know, that's, that's, yeah.
There we go. Okay, other than a name correction, we'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Yep.
It's unanimous, thank you. Moving on, do we have any old or unfinished business? No, there being none. Any items not reasonably anticipated? There being none. We'll go to town administrator time. I think this letter's getting longer.
I'll try and keep it brief. So just a few town hall operations update for the October 2024 Town Administrative Newsletter. I just released that. We focused on community events, one of which is highlighting the incredible efforts of our volunteers for Pumpkin Fest. For seasonal closures, the public restrooms have been closed for the seasons as the pines and Shanahan and the irrigation lines have been flushed and winterized. We've also taken in the docks at the Pines Recreation Area. The budget book update work is continuing on the budget book, which is set to be released to staff during the week of November 25th. At our meeting on November 25th, I will also be adding to the agenda the goals. They have not necessarily changed over the years, so it's more of a formality than anything, but I would like the boards to take another look at them before finalizing. The tax rate hearing, we are planning to hold the tax rate tentatively at our next select board meeting. The public disclosure for FY '25 values ends today and then DLS needs to issue certification. Uh, the public disclosure for FY25 values ends today, and then DLS needs to issue certification. Uh, the Board of Health, uh, is going to be making an appointment for the administrative assistant on November 21st to Melanie Smith. Uh, if she accepts, then she will begin her new role on December 2nd. And then I just wanted to do two quick thank yous, um, one of which is to the town clerk, the assistant town clerk, and all of the election workers for their outstanding job that they did during the recent election. There were, uh, a lot of people that came through the doors and the process ran seamlessly, and that is due to their hard work and all of their careful preparation. And then also to thank Evelyn Tuttle for her outstanding work in organizing Monday's Veterans Day event. I think, um, we can all, uh, speak to the fact that it takes a lot of work to select the readings for that particular event, and she does a great job with it, and we really appreciate all of the, um, careful preparation she makes to putting together the event. For project requests and residential concerns, uh, select board chair Cashyn Ellis had approached me about putting together a more detailed, um, outline for the project eligibility letter that was filed, uh, resembling the project that was recently done in West Newbury. So we took a closer look at what was done in West Newbury, and instead of creating something new, we didn't reinvent the wheel, we kinda took what they had and we just filled in the appropriate information. So that is up under the zoning board of appeals page, uh, on the website. For the Groveland Housing Authority, we were final... Finally able to schedule a meeting with, uh, the executive director to go over some of the affordable housing, uh, goals that we have. This was something that was brought up by the board during the discussion with 36 Garrison Street. Specifically, what are we doing to partner with the Groveland Housing Authority in pushing forward our affordable housing needs? So, one of the, uh, topics that we brought up was the buy-down program that we had put forward with the community preservation funds. That was something that we had done with the former director, uh, Joe Hart, who is no longer with the Groveland Housing Authority. And as part of that proposal, we had assigned about $8,000 that would be given to the Groveland Housing Authority to help with the lottery and the affirmative fair marketing plan that would need to be put in place in order to move forward with that process. Um, when Clara first started her position, I had approached her about continuing that effort. She said, you know, I... We have a lot of things going on, there's a lot of transition, let me take a closer look and... and figure out what we need to do. And we just never really followed up. So, as part of this particular conversation, we did, um, talk about that again, and it was found that they do not have the capacity currently in order to assist with that effort. Um, so at the next Community Preservation Committee meeting, I will be suggesting that we close that project and put those funds back into the Affordable Housing Fund, and then we can then figure out if there's another project that we could use those funds to put forward, the affordable housing initiatives. So that was one thing that we talked about. And then the second thing that we had talked about was, again, the new proposal that I'd be making to the Community Preservation Committee, which is to fund a consultant to help figure out ways that we could tap into the affordable housing monies that we've set aside that are part of the inclusionary bylaw, and what that would look like. Currently, the way that the bylaw is written, it would need an affordable housing trust, or we could work with the Groveland Housing Authority. So that being the case, there is potential to work with the Groveland Housing Authority to potentially purchase property and then turn that property into an affordable housing unit that could be managed by the Groveland Housing Authority. And there are some other properties here in town that are managed like that, and whether or not they would have the additional capacity to manage those units in addition to the units that they currently have. So we talked a little bit about that, and they were on board with partnering on that effort, and more specifically, working with the consultant once hired, to give a little bit of feedback and kinda work through all of those more, uh, detailed elements that would need to go into it. And then, we also spoke about the particular parcel that was brought before the board at one point in time, uh, back behind the police station over here. I believe it was something that was put forward as a, um, senior center or a community center. Uh, and unfortunately, it did not move forward, and I believe that, uh, select board chair Cashyn Ellis, during the affordable housing discussion, talked about potentially using that particular area for additional affordable housing means. So we had talked a little bit about that and whether or not they would wanna partner with us. They mentioned bringing in Habitat for Humanity and potentially working with them, or another RFP for another developer to come in and kinda, again, maybe give us the best of both worlds if we can accomplish trying to do some affordable housing uh, on the top floor and doing something community-oriented on the bottom floor. Um, so they've done some similar things in Salisbury with Habitat for Humanity, so they said that they'd be willing to work with us on that as well. So, it was a productive meeting. I think there's a lot more work that needs to be done, but I think one of the... The key takeaways that I took from the conversation was that if we're able to move forward with a CPC application for consultant, I think it will give us a lot more, um, of a pathway forward, because we can identify what needs to be done and we can have all of the key players at the table during those discussions. So it's not just kind of, oh, we could do this, we could do that, we could do ABC. Like, no, this is what you... You should do, and this is how you should go about doing it. And I think that'll make it easier to bring all the parties to the table and move forward. The other update is that we met with the tri-town managers and PRSD today, and we spoke a little bit about the Pennsylt County Regional School District Agreement. Uh, we had taken a look at the amendments that, I think, maybe two meetings ago that were put forward, and we had made some changes. Those have gone through both the, uh, Merrimack Select Board as well as the West Newbury Select Board. Um, both the town manager and the town administrator and... and Merrimack and West Newbury. We sat down and we discussed some of our concerns or highlighted some areas that might not, you know, necessarily work on a practical nature of getting people together and the advisory committee and things of that nature. So, we had a brief conversation and we... We also spoke with the business manager over at the school to kinda figure out whether or not some of those requests that we had for the stabilization or the excess and deficiency, um, and enrollment and other types of, uh, mechanisms that we put in the document would be something that they could do. Um, so we got some feedback from her. So we are making some amendments, a more comprehensive redlined version, because it was very messy, as you saw last time, what was green, what was red, what was yellow, and kinda highlighting what we changed and what we all kind of agree on, and then highlighting some of those areas that we found that all three communities might share a different opinion on. So, that document should be finalized by the end of the week, the beginning of next week. We unfortunately don't meet until the 25th. The state of the... The district is on the 26th, the Tuesday, and after that meeting, we're scheduled to have a brief meeting with the other select boards in order to make a recommendation and vote on the regional agreement. So I understand that's not ideal in terms of a turnaround for review, but as soon as I get the document, like I said, which should be by Friday or Monday, I can send that over to the board, so you individually have enough time to kinda go through, and I'm happy to answer any questions or offer any clarity that I can, and then you can have a more detailed conversation that Monday. For the field use and property use permits, we granted the property use permit 2025 for Perry Park for the parking for the Snowflake Festival. Uh, for important upcoming... Upcoming dates, we have the Housing Public Workshop that will be held on November 21st from 6:30 to 8:30 PM here at town hall. I think I mentioned this to you last time, this is part of the, uh, efforts to analyze our zoning for compliance with, uh, MBTA 3A as well as just housing in general. Also to note that town hall will be closed on Thursday, November 28th and Friday, November 29th, in observance of Thanksgiving holiday. For grants, there were no updates from procurement, there were no updates for technical review conference, there were no meetings held. Uh, for the community preservation projects, as you'll see at the Pines Recreation Area, the fence is being installed this week over at the Pickle Ball Tennis Course, so we're really excited. So, as soon as that's completed, that project will pretty much be substantially completed, except for some small minor grading that will be done along the edges of the court, and that's going to be done in the spring, and the highway department will be helping with that since they regularly maintain that area as well, to make sure that it's easy for them to access and do what they need to do. And then otherwise, we just have the meetings and events and seminars that I've attended in the last two weeks, so if there's any questions about that, please let me know. The only one that I did highlight again is the tri-town and PRSD meeting that we had today. They did share with us the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools, uh, presentation for a project called, uh, 211, and that kinda resembles the 211 districts that are considered held harmless by the state, like we just talked about earlier at our meeting, and how that impacts us on a financial level, particularly in... in the way of Chapter 70. So, I will be sharing that with all of you, as well as the official invite for the Pennsylt County Regional School State of the District, and that should be going out, uh, either later this evening or first thing tomorrow morning.
Great, thank you for getting all that organized on paper for us. Um, one quick question on the regional agreement. Um, we're going to try to meet after the school does its State of the Union, State of the School Address.
Correct. So the plan is for them to start at 6:00 and to go no later than 7:00. All of the... The three communities will be posting a public meeting, because it needs to be posted, public meeting for us in order to deliberate and to... to vote, so we are posting that meeting for 7:00. So that will enforce the hard deadline of keeping it between the 6:00 to 7:00 for the state of the district.
Okay. Is there, um, any consideration in your... I know it's just you, you three town managers, town administrators, but, um... Is there any consideration for just finding the common ground and making those changes and maybe holding off on some of the other changes until the towns feel they're needed or we can reach agreement?
100%. So that was, uh, the consensus of the entire group, is that there's some low-hanging fruit that we can all agree on. Let's get that underway, let's get that approved, make those changes, and then we'll agree to put the other items on hold and then address them as needed. So, it is definitely the consensus of both Merrimack and West Newbury to move in that similar direction.
Oh, great, okay, good. That... That should make it easy to... It should be doable, then, I think. Anybody else? Any questions? Nope, great, thanks for everything you do. And, um, if anybody hasn't looked at the Garrison Street, um, little write-up on the... on board, I think it's... I think it's really nicely done. It's like a dialogue that kind of explains the... when the process began. And then it does have some links, but it's not just all links. It actually talks to you about what this process is, and Rebecca did a wonderful job kind of encapsulating the process and re-explaining where things are, why they are there, what the next steps might be. Which I think is kinda where everybody is on this kinda thing. We just... We don't all know this process that well. You know, I've learned every step along the way, and tripped and fell down a few times, but it's... It's, um... It's a complicated process. So I appreciate that. Anybody else? Nope, I guess we're going... Are we going to selectman's time, I think? Let me just look. I think we're up to there. Yes, select board time and reports. Kathleen? No, just kidding. Just kidding with you.
Uh, yeah, I just have a few things, so gonna kinda echo what Rebecca already wrote, but thank you to all the election workers who dedicated their time to assist with the election. I know it was a busy day, so thank you for your hard work. Um, also wanna thank everyone to put together... Together the, um, Veterans Day Ceremony. Unfortunately, I did have to work that day, um, but luckily, it is on YouTube, so if I suggest for anyone that missed it, watch it on Groveland's YouTube page, um, it was really nice. Um, and also a reminder of the first public workshop for the MBTA zoning, for Section A, um, next Thursday, November 21st, um, from 6:30 to 8:30. Um, I suggest residents attend it to learn more about the law and how it's gonna affect Groveland. Maybe there'll be snacks, that's usually a good way to bring people in. So we'll see.
Look at this sign language.
Couple food trucks out front.
Couple food trucks, free beer. Am I allowed to say that? Probably not, but I just suggest people go, because I know, you know, something that's gonna be coming up, and it just... For everyone at least be educated on it, whether you're on what... You have an opinion or not, come in and... and learn more about it. It's important.
Thank you. Jason?
Yes, I would also like to echo the...
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, could you just repeat the date and location?
Yeah, so, um, it is on Thursday, November 21st, from 6:30 to 8:30 in the evening here? Yes, thank you.
Yes, I would also like to echo the thanks for everybody that, uh, helped out during the election. I'd also like to thank everybody that came out to vote. Uh, we had some record numbers and it was phenomenal, and I hope everybody continues to come out and vote, even if it's not so controversial. I believe it was forty... Forty-one hundred, forty-four hundred?
There was about 80% of the turnout.
Almost 81% turnout, yes. It was great.
That's it?
That's it.
Mark?
Good.
Ed?
Almost it.
Okay, um...
Oh, wait.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I noticed in our correspondence, we have the create a wreath thing, but I also wanted to say, uh, we got the turkey shoot, uh, the Friday before Thanksgiving, the 22nd.
The turkey raffle, right?
Yeah. Yeah, we can't say shoot anymore, probably, but...
Well, no, but it's called the...
I just...
Whatever, I know. You buy tickets and you win... Win a turkey?
Yeah, hundreds of kids running around, it's great.
I know, it's so fun.
And they are looking for volunteers to do individually wrapped desserts and such.
Do you dress up as a turkey, Mark? Do you have a turkey costume, or is the carrot coming back?
Let that be the surprise.
Okay.
And what was the other thing? Make a wreath?
I don't have any.
No.
We got the correspondence here for the...
Oh, okay, I got that. Okay, I just have everything. So we have, um... Oh, yeah, Washington Hall, the Groveland Historical Society is creating... Doing a fourth annual create a wreath workshop, December 1st, um, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM, and December 5th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. So two dates, the December 1st, 2:00 to 4:00, and December 5th, 6:00 to 8:00, okay? And it costs $50, which includes the wreath decorations and a custom bow. Oh, another. What is going on here? Is this for real? The Groveland Historical Society presents at Historic Washington Hall, the gravestone girl?
Oh, that passed. That's an old one. Old news, old news, Jason.
Can I object?
That was mean.
I'll get... I'll get even. At some point, I will...
I'll be looking forward to it.
I will get even. I... And again, I have to laugh that hard, Mark, it wasn't...
I'm gonna redo on that one.
No, 'cause I got an idea. I'm gonna save the make a wreath one for next July.
Make a wreath in July? No, no, okay, just stop.
Christmas in July.
Okay, so, and I guess for myself, I'm, again, thanks to the election workers, thanks to the Veterans Day Ceremony, it was great, the band, the chorus, the speak... Speeches, the readings, everything, always so, so wonderful. And the number of veterans we had present, incredible as well, which was admirable. And, um, just a... Just a general shout-out, I... I don't know if our town departments were involved, but I know Georgetown, Boxford, um, fire departments were heavily involved, um, just a couple days ago in the fires out there. And, uh, just a general shout-out, I know it's a lot of work, these wildfires, and, um, we don't seem to be getting the rain that we need, so I hope everybody's taking all the precautions they can, because, uh, once those start, it's so hard to get them under control, and it... Um, my husband volunteered on the firefighting department for years, and the first year he was on it, Georgetown was on fire all the time, and... and he was over there all the time, and I could've killed him, 'cause he said, "This'll only be once in a while." And they were out there for hours. It's... It's brutal work that they're doing, um, fighting these... These brush fires. So, big shout-out to all the firefighters that are doing that, keeping our homes safe and everything. Hopefully, they need some rain. And that's everything?
Mm-hmm.
I'll call for a motion to adjourn?
Make them adjourn.
Did you second? Did you second that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All in favor?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock, thank you. Gravestone girl, you just wanted me to read that.
I did.